I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John said he'll be here in five minutes, so we're starting. Just a reminder to the board, if you're speaking, turn your microphone on, please, and speak into it. First order of business is with the accountant, which we're gonna pass over because there are no current line item transfers to deal with. So we're gonna move past that. We have a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors and the Personnel Policy and Procedures Board. I see the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board. I do not see the Board of Assessors. If the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board doesn't mind, I can pass over this for a little while, or we can take your side, our side. And, okay, so we'll just pass over for a few minutes and hopefully someone from the Board of Assessors will show up. Heather, we're gonna just jump to you with your town administrator report.
You are. How exciting. I'm actually just shoveled now because you just did that. All right. All right, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Let's hope so. All right, so we just have a quick couple of updates. I didn't really do too much of a report this evening, it's been a lot going on. First thing is, we're getting to fiscal year end, so Vicki has sent out the annual notice to everyone to get in their bills and also to notify her if there's going to be any encumbrances coming the following year. We've also shared the same information with the representatives from the boards, committees, and commissions at last week's monthly meeting. We're also wrapping up a few purchase orders at this time of big purchases. The purchases include a truck for the water department, also a...
A truck for the water department?
Yes, for the water department.
Okay.
Out of their piece. We also purchasing what's called a hot box, which helps with paving from the highway department. We're utilizing the pothole funds that we got this year and the amount of, I think it's like forty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars for that piece in order to do some road improvements. So we're also wrapping up with that, which will be very nice. Other than that, what's going on with the town? So we have the Board Committee Commission meeting that met last week. We're getting different people every meeting and trying to increase the population of that and work with everyone on that. As far as IT goes, we have installed a few new computers over the past couple of weeks, so people are starting to get away from XP finally. It's taken about a year, but we're moving past it. We're working with different softwares and moving from there and... We're also working with different departments on various policies, whether it's our financial policies, getting up our permitting guide altogether, working on sitting down in the next month or so to talk about either credit, debit, or other kinds of cards with the Treasurer's Office and the accountant and finance team.
We're having some technical difficulties in case you haven't noticed. So, why don't you just time out for one second while we...
Okay. I'm actually all done unless you'd like me to keep talking here. I don't really have much to report at this time.
No.
Thanks.
George, you can do a monologue. Okay, we're good. Whatever you want, George.
Entertain the public at home.
Can you test that one to see if that one...
This one is on. Yep. Still on. You can just put it on there for now.
I know.
Looks like somebody was messing with it, but I don't know where or why.
It's fun.
How about my phone?
So it's fun. That's why they were messy.
Um, for now, would it be possible to move to that microphone?
Right.
I don't wanna hold it to me, but I don't know where. Is that one still on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, Sally.
Oh, how do you push this down?
We'll pass over the select board liaison reports unless ladies do have anything. Select board liaison reports.
There's nothing.
No, I'm good. I checked, you're good.
John has something he's supposed to talk about when he gets here. Open time for the public? Oh, Mrs. Willonas.
Tammy Willonas, 298 College Highway.
There you go.
At a Board of Selectmen's meeting that I was unable to attend, that my husband and I watched on the video of, there was a time when Heather got very excited because she was saving money on water being bought. Our town got voted the best water around, and yet we're buying water for this place? And people are coming in with empty water bottles, filling them up, going to their meeting, then coming out, filling them again, and leaving. And it's been witnessed by a couple of people. So, why are we even buying water when we have the best water around?
Well, that's a great question, one that we can bring up and talk about when it's on the agenda, but we did not have best water bottles, so that was... But I understand the point. Anybody else?
No.
Anybody else? You look like you're gonna get up. We have continued... I'm just trying to wait till we have more people here.
We can go now to the insurance, I don't mind.
All right, so we're gonna move down to 5.2 for those of you who are following along. And Mrs. Willonas, John's on his way in, so that's why I'm holding off, so, sorry. So, we requested bids for insurance this year from Larry Joseph Insurance and Maya. Larry Joseph is who we currently use for insurance, and Maya is generally who everyone else uses. We've been using Larry Joseph for the past few years, and we've used Maya. We have used Maya, and there's been a strong push to return there. We are the last of the hand-ins to rejoin Maya, and the review of the rates are as follows. Larry Joseph Insurance, the premium was one hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. The differences include that this one currently holds a thousand dollars cost for underground insurance tanks and offers a different fire and police insurance that includes an overage coverage and PTSD coverage. Maya's premium is one hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-four. If we pay this upfront, as we normally do, we will get a four percent discount off the bat, bringing this down to one hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-one cents. In addition, we would also qualify for Maya Rewards, which means that for each Maya training we attend at a regular conference, which employees are at anyway, we would get a discount from our insurance costs for the following year. So you're looking at approximately a seven thousand different, seven thousand dollar difference between who we use now and who we could possibly be using. So the board needs tonight to make a decision, and tonight, in order to continue coverage of insurance starting fiscal '16, which is July 1st. It's the recommendation of Heather, Donna Whitley, and formerly a head colleague to proceed with Maya. This year, we budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for insurance and workman's comp. So, we assume that we would have about maybe a thirty-two hundred dollars savings. Discussion from the board?
I think it's a good idea.
Can you say that right into your microphone?
I think it's a good idea. We're saving money.
Jackie?
Yes, I would agree with that.
So I would accept a motion to accept the bid for our insurance from Maya, for one hundred and twenty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. That's before paying already.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Just need to get closer to the mic, they're having trouble at home. It's not you, it's Guy. Can you send it?
Is it on?
Yeah.
John, we're having mic problems. That's why you got this.
And so, I know we're having a lull here, but just for the record, I dropped off a very cranky three-year-old, and I promised to say hi to him. Hi, Ethan, one of us.
Both their words.
Sorry.
I'm impressed that he watches.
Fine, go on.
We did a town administrator report. We skipped around, we voted to move forward with Maya's insurance bid, which is going to save us approximately sixty-two hundred dollars a year. We just voted on that. I did call open time for the public, but saw another gentleman walk in. I can go back to that if you'd like, before we move forward.
I would like, yes.
Yeah, so I'll go back to open time for the public and give the Board of Assessors five to ten minutes. Your mic is yours.
Mark Forton, Six Nickel Circle. I was here last board meeting with Mr. Thiero, who's, was expecting the public comments to be a little bit later also. But anyways, I'd just like to comment on a couple of things from last meeting. As you may recall, last meeting, we hashed out a couple of things. Mr. Thiero brought a couple of points with the fire chief's contract and his, in his view, a few of the things that the fire chief wasn't doing. My view too, I didn't research as much as his as he did, but Mr. Thiero's comments, he alluded to a few of the things that the fire chief wasn't doing in his contract. He wasn't fulfilling his contract. There was numerous things, but one of the things was that he didn't live within the town, and that was absolutely very clear in the contract. And then, at the end of the meeting, as I've been told, the board went into executive session and decided to change the contract so that the fire chief didn't have to live in town, and he just had to live within five miles now. I question a few of that things, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that what happened at the end of last meeting?
The Board of Selectmen voted four to one to allow a change to the fire chief's contract, that he only needs to live within five miles of the fire station.
All right, I've got a few issues with that. I've been close into politics a few times in my, in my life, once as a union president for the department I work for now. And I've seen some pretty shady politics before, but I gotta say, this one really got my blood boiling. I've never really been personally as upset as I was when I, when I heard this news. I think it's the, I think it's appalling, the way this went down. One of the things I find really unnerving is the fact that I've actually got a friend from a surrounding community, another fire officer in the surrounding community, that lives within five miles of town, of the fire station, but does not live in town, and did not want to uproot his family and bring them to town because his family was situated in schools and amongst other things. So although he's not here tonight, I find it completely appalling that we've stipulated in the chief's contract and during the chief selection process that the chief needs to live in town. And I think you guys missed the ball, or somebody missed the ball entirely. If you need to change that, you should have changed it beforehand when you posted the job. You guys missed out on a great fire chief, a great person that could have been on this job, that lives within the parameters of the things you guys changed. I question the legality of what happened, to the point where the the unfairness to my friend and probably possibly others that I don't know about, I would question the legality of that. What I don't question is how morally that's wrong. It may be legal, I'm not a lawyer, but morally, what happened at the end of the last select board meeting was morally wrong, and that's all I gotta say about that. I can't believe that happened.
I think the purpose of open time for the public is to let the public tell us their concerns. I don't think that we should have a big long discussion about these things. I guess if you have a short statement, I wouldn't be opposed. That microphone is not working, so you're gonna have to talk really loud.
I think one of the issues is your assumptions of what happened. I wasn't on the hiring committee, nor was I on the board at the time this was signed. So as a new member, and these folks could put in their comments too, it says in Southampton or within five miles, so the wording was ambiguous. I deal with contracts all day long, and I looked at it and said, "I can't make a decision here on what the real meaning was." It was ambiguous, and when it's ambiguous, you need to give the benefit of the doubt to the person that has the contract. You're not gonna terminate somebody because the wording that they put in this contract was ambiguous.
Let me clarify something. I wasn't looking for termination because of one violation of a contract. It was one of many in my term, in my eyes, plus, just in my opinion again, I worry for the safety of my family and my property. Now, I don't, I'm gonna disagree with you. I'm not a lawyer, I don't have much experience with contracts, but I totally disagree with you from my layman's terms. There was nothing ambiguous about must live in the town within five miles.
Or within five miles, or how are the words?
Must live in the town. But anyways, I mean, it's semantics. I still think, I still think what happens was morally wrong and appalling, whether or not it was ambiguous. It just, it just wasn't right. The way it went down was not right.
Just for everybody watching, I just want everybody to know that it's one opinion out of many here, so it's, you know.
I, I understand. I understand, and I, I'm just saying, I, like I said, I've never had a political decision make my blood boil as much as that one. And that's why I'm back here tonight, because I, I'm, I'm very disappointed. Now that being said, I would like to know how the vote went. Who voted, who voted yea and who voted nay?
Have the minutes been approved and released?
I wanna say if that was last week's minutes, then, or last meeting's, two weeks ago, then no, they have not. So generally, the process is, is the first thing that has to happen is executive sessions need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. And some executive sessions, we put right away in the top section where they can be open to the public. Other times, what happens is the board needs to vote to release them. And they are supposed to periodically review their minutes to see what should be released, what shouldn't. Some things will never be released, you know, when you're talking medical things, it's always gonna be sealed.
I understand, I'm fairly familiar with the law. I don't, again, I'm not a lawyer.
So the answer is, the board hasn't got there yet because this is the first time we've met since last meeting. So once they get there, they'll determine whether or not they should be released right away.
Okay, I know I can, I can request them formally, and I can get them before they're released.
For one second, is there any legality to saying how the one?
That was my question. That's gonna be my next question.
You know, I don't wanna be the person to provide that information, but I would say based on the fact that it was a contract negotiation session, the contract has now been resolved, so theoretically, once they're approved, they should be released. So it's just a matter of what you guys wanna mention before paperwork comes out.
If the board has no objection...
I voted to give the benefits to the chief.
I one hundred percent agree with you. I think the chief should live in town. I think that when you start changing contracts for people, there is a very big problem, and I voted not to change the contract.
I voted to change it.
I voted to change it on the premise that it was ambiguous.
And do we know the fourth vote, or the fifth vote, sorry?
It was four to one vote.
Oh yeah, I guess I can do the math, thank you. So furthermore, you know, the, the list of things that Mr. Thiero read off last, last week, I guess, one of my concerns moving on from here is, I'm wondering, and I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to poke the bear by any means, but I'm wondering if there's, there's plans for an executive session, again, tonight, to change the other things in the contract that we don't think is actually being followed, any other ambiguous parts, or maybe not ambiguous parts. I, I just, I'm not sure if we're going to just change everything in the contract so that it looks like he's doing that, the job he's supposed to be doing according to the contract. I'm just wondering that. No executive sessions tonight? All right, I won't stay all night then. And then I would, I would just like to say, I would like to remind people, the board, and I'm sure you know, that you're the voice of the people's wishes. You're not the voice of your own wishes. I think we gotta be careful with that. You're not making decisions for yourselves and the way you guys feel, and ladies. You're making decisions on what the public feels. And I find it very disturbing that I've been stopped two times in public, complete strangers that have talked to me and said, "I think you're right. I love what you're doing. I stand behind you a hundred percent." And I find it saddening that I'm still one of the only people that have ever stood up in this meeting about this subject. I know there's people watching at home, because these are the people that are coming up to me at Rite Aid and Big Y and other places, and I just, I would like to say that I wish the board would be able to hear the voices of the people and not just of a select few people that are strong enough and brave enough to stand up in front of the board. I wish that the public would be behind it, and the public would be here to give you their wishes firsthand. Because what I'm thinking's happening is that their voices are not getting over to the board. And I think that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forton. Well, Mrs. Willonas.
Well, I would like to agree with...
Can you just move the microphone, please?
Sorry. Tammy Willonas, 298 College Highway. I'd like to agree with Mr. Forton on his first question, issue that he brought up. I too know of people that are fire chiefs locally that would have applied for this, but they thought they had to live in town within five miles, and they didn't want to uproot their families. So, future job postings, we need to be clear.
Thank you.
I guess I just wanna make it clear, and I, again, I can't speak for them, but I think I can. I don't think any of us like the idea of what was written in the contract. We weren't on the committee, we, I wasn't on the select board when it happened, but we had a look at what's gonna happen. Do we discipline or let a fire chief go because of a contract issue? Or do we put that issue aside and do with the other issues, like that gentleman was talking about? So we put that one aside to rest. I agree that in the future, it's gotta be crystal clear. Must reside within the town limits period, and feel bad for the gentleman because they have been a good candidate or not, but we're just after, we're reacting to what we have in front of us. And that's, that's the issue.
And to avoid a conversation, I completely disagree with John. I think it was very clear in the contract. I think that there was room to move forward in a different way, but we will have to agree to disagree. So, we're gonna move on, and then we'll call the committee meeting. We have a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors and the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board. This way, the most continued from a few weeks ago, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming again tonight. Before we begin, I just was gonna give you a few guidelines, but there's not gonna be much conversation going back and forth because the Board of Assessors is not here. So I guess we'll hear from the Personnel Policies and Procedures Chairman, which is Mr. Art Lawrence, on an issue of payroll changes in the Board of Assessors office.
Hi, Art Lawrence, 113 Crooked Ledge Road. I'm also the chairman of the Personnel Policies and Procedure Board. With your permission, I'd like to introduce the board. We have a full board here tonight. I don't know if everybody has met the folks. Okay. We first introduced Jim Palermo, who's a retired labor negotiator from the state of New York. Also, I'd like to introduce Joanne Alderman, who's a retired senior HR director. Janet Kane, I think everybody knows, but if they don't, Janet is retired and a senior marketing director. Of course, Liz Moulton is, is our liaison. I should mention Janet is on the Finance Committee liaison person, and Liz is the select board liaison. Approximately three weeks ago, we received a complaint that was submitted to the Personnel Board concerning a 3.6 percent salary increase, an hourly salary increase. The exact numbers were twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents to twenty-three dollars and two cents. This was for the principal assessor, Ms. Lori Stewart. When we looked into this, we did not find any documentation. In our case, that would be a PCF, a personal change form, and we did not find or see any approvals of that salary increase. Obviously, the Personnel Board was very concerned about this, wanted to start immediately an inquiry, and also, we wanted to come out with a report and recommendations to the select board. We decided to go into, or to call a, an executive session meeting for this situation because it did, we did look at the law, and I believe Section 1 talks about complaints. We sent out email and also correspondence, written correspondence, to both the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, Mr. Swanson, and also to Ms. Stewart to come to a, to a meeting that was going to be held at 2:00, primarily to make sure that Lori could, could attend that meeting. Just before the meeting, or that day of the meeting, we received an email from the Board of Assessors Chair, Mr. Swanson, who told us he refused to allow the employee to attend this executive session. And the chair also stated that he had to work for a living and couldn't attend the 2:00 meeting. He also made note that the town of Southampton has too many executive sessions and suggested that we do this in an open session. A few days after this, one of our board members happened to be looking through the Board of Assessors minutes and found that there was a notation in the minutes that the 3.6 percent increase was granted by the then Board of Assessors. Interestingly enough, the agenda did not state that this particular subject was coming up. After that, we decided on June, June 4th to have our normal opening meeting, open meeting, and we sent and invited the, the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, sent him a, an agenda. And again, the day of the meeting, he came back to us via an email stating that he could not attend this meeting because he could not get, only could get two out of three members to attend, and he said he definitely needed three members to be at this meeting. We were kinda frustrated at this point and decided to, even though we couldn't conduct any type of formal inquiry on it and come up with a report, we decided to come up with our recommendations. And let me just take a minute here and read directly from our, our minutes from this particular meeting. "The Personnel Board recommended, or will recommend to the select board that the Board of Assessors should be censured for its failure to comply with established procedures for granting wage increases inasmuch as allowing such a deviation from standard procedures which set a precedent with many unwelcome consequences, such as undermining employee morale throughout the town amid concerns about unequal treatment." Of course, we're all in town facing level funding and so on, so forth, and to see a 3.6 percent increase, again, without, and, and don't get us wrong, if the paperwork had been sent in, if it had been approved, obviously, the Personnel Board would not have any, any issues with this. We also talked about rescinding the pay, the, the wage increase, but after some, some major thought and looking into, into what we found in the Personnel But after some major thought and looking into what we found in the personnel files, we felt that the job, there is a job description for this position. It is a bit old, but the person was hired under this job description. And the job description falls into, and has been scored, by the way, falls into a grade 13, which was pretty close to what the projected $23.02 per hour that was granted. Now, we do have some issues. We're not sure. There's no, there's nothing in the personnel file that says the principal assessor has the credentials. We'd like to see that, the Massachusetts Accredited Assessor, MAA. We'd also want to make sure, according to the job description, that the assessor does commercial-type assessing. And we've heard and have confirmed in the past that we've hired people to do this particular work. So, I'm just reading all my notes so I don't forget anything here. So, our, what we're recommending that by the end of the month, the Board of Assessors submit a PCF, personal change form, just like every other board and every other department head and appointing authority has to do. And include the credentials as far as the job description. And if there's any rescoring, we'll be more than happy to do that. We don't think that's required, but if we have to, we will. And we would go forward. Another recommendation is, it was the consensus of the Personnel Board that Mr. Swanson totally breached protocol by instructing Ms. Stewart not to meet with the Personnel Board, notwithstanding that the meeting was scheduled during Ms. Stewart's work hours. In the letter inviting Ms. Stewart to meet with the PBB, the Personnel Board, she was advised that she was entitled to have counsel or a representative present. The Personnel Board noted its desire to stress that is not critical, and this is a key point, we're not critical of Ms. Stewart. And that there is no reason to question that she acted in good faith. Rather, the Personnel Board, in order to conduct the work its members were elected, and we are an elected board to perform, has the right to confer with employees. While Ms. Stewart works for the Board of Assessors, she is an employee of the town and therefore is within the Personnel Board's scope of authority. And if you want to refer to Section 2 Personal Bylaw, I think you will see that. There seems to be a lot of issues around supporting PCFs. We see people, almost every day, we're getting complaints that PCFs are set up or say that people should be working 25 hours and work actually 31 hours. This is a consistent theme that we see. Now, we understand during emergency situations that there might be a reason to do this, but we would think that would be fairly rare. We also have a real problem with people starting work without the forms and everything signed off. We're really worried about somebody starting and everything not signed off and then somebody getting hurt. I don't know what the liability, I'm an engineer, not a lawyer, but I think it opens up the town for some real potential issues. And then, let's see, and then the final thing is something personal for me and really does not reflect the board. But what is bothersome to me is that we have liaisons for Almenurs and, which maybe meet once a year, if that. We have liaisons for ZBA and some of these other boards, but we have no liaisons for the Board of Assessors or the Board of Health or the Water Commissioners. To me, that's kind of shocking that we don't watch and cover that. I'm not saying that liaison members have to go to every meeting, but I think they should know what's going on, read the minutes, and maybe situations like I've described tonight wouldn't happen in the future. I thank you for your patience and we'll be willing, the board will be willing to answer any questions.
I'm pretty versed on this conversation, so I would accept any conversation or questions from the board at this time. Jackie?
I have one, Art.
Mr. Lawrence, you might want to stand up for you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat again, people that, or committees that don't have liaisons or departments, pardon me, the Board of Health, the Water Commission, and what was the third one?
The Board of Assessors.
Yeah, of course.
John? How did that get through when the payroll was approved without going through the account?
It didn't. It got caught. It got caught late because we had a new person working in the treasurer's office that wasn't aware that she had to check increases versus PCFs.
So, it never went into effect?
It went into effect, absolutely. And it went into effect for quite a number of weeks until Donna was able to find the issue.
So, is it still in there now?
Yes, it is.
So, the system failed in that particular instance?
Yes, it did. You know, John, I think we need to be, and you know, you know this better than I, we need to be very careful. I mean, some of this stuff is getting, and as a board, you know, just give us the documentation, just give us the PCF. We'll go through, make sure the approvals happen. I mean, it's a fairly simple process. It may take a little longer than it should, but we do get it done. We do come in, and we're very amenable about coming in more than, you know, we're supposed to only meet once a month, and most months, we meet three or four or five times. So, we certainly can sign off these documents and make sure they're moved forward.
I agree with you. Some people that go around it, go around it, and all of a sudden, it's in place.
Yeah.
I mean, we certainly had interest if we had some basis for it.
Well, I think that, can we bring this part up? One of the issues is that, you know, there's a new job description floating around for this position. And if I'm correct, if I'm not wrong, but it's called Principal Assessor. When we looked through the file for this position, the job description in there and on the only PCF that we have is Principal Assessor. And so, they're looking for an increase on a position that is already in place. So, I think that there's a serious lack of oversight, which would lead me to liaison point. I think that there's some serious bending of rules by elected officials or elected positions, which is very unfortunate.
You can say something.
And if I may, it's kind of telling that for the third meeting of the Board of Assessors isn't here to defend their actions.
Yeah.
And I think you get on this, it's by elected officials that we have a governance order. So, if we want to correct this, excuse the expression, we punished the person that got the increase, not the people that allowed it to go through. Because like you said, she's not personally...
No. We don't want to punish Lori in any way because she was not, you know, she was just following. I mean, my God, you know, she got an increase, hey, she was happy as heck and...
Art, excuse me, wasn't this approved at the town meeting last year? Do you remember?
No.
Heather, do you remember this?
This was not approved. What was approved last year was the total line for the assistant and the principal assessor combined. And that current salary that was approved back then was when it was calculated out at 22.27. When we sat down to do budgeting for FY '16, we were told by the Board of Assessors, and it's documented in their documents they submitted to us, that the voted FY '15 number was $23.02, which was not the case. And that's on the form that they submitted to us when we went to the budget meeting. So, when we budgeted for this year, Lori was budgeted for 31 hours at the rate of $23.02 an hour. And it should have only been at $22.27 an hour. But somewhere in March, it was changed unbeknownst to everyone on the finance team when we did all of this piece, and it wasn't, no one had any idea.
I think one of the more concerning parts to me is that if you're going to allow the Board of Assessors at this point to give raises to their employees without telling anybody, then that means that the treasurer can do it, the clerk can do it, the Board of Health can do it. And so, at what point do you say, you have to follow rules? There are rules set in place for a reason. And if you're not going to follow them, then what are we going to do about it? Because in my opinion, it's not okay. I don't blame Lori. Not Lori's fault.
No, it is.
I think there are some issues that we need to have in place. I mean, we need the PCF. We need to make sure that we have the credentials on file. We need to make sure whatever the job description is, she can meet those things or figure out how to get her to meet those things. The issue is not Lori. It's with the elected officials who are bypassing the rules. That's the issue.
Correct.
Are there any other comments from the Board?
Tammy Walunas, so are they going to say that that is ambiguous and just change it?
So, Jim, go ahead. I'd love to hear you.
Jim Palermo, Glendale Road. The reason that we're saying that Lori should keep the raise is that the job description for a, her current position of assessor was approved in 1980. And since 1980, she's been called, what's the term? 2008, I'm sorry. That she's been called that title. What is it? Principal Assessor. And when, in 2008, that job was scored, the raise that she is currently receiving is within the acceptable wage range. That's why we're recommending that the board merely censure the elected members of the assessors board. By censure, I just mean warning them and asking them to cooperate. Our posture is we want to create a management structure in this town. We want everybody to operate under the rules. We want an orderly process. I'm bringing this up on my own, not that the board said it, but in some of the correspondence that's gone back and forth between the Board of Assessors and us, other critical issues have been raised, which, you know, personnel experts might, or professionals might be a little bit more concerned with. For example, whether is that position professional? Whether it's administrative or supervisory? Whether it's exempt? Because the Board of Assessors has suggested that the assessor should be able to work flexible hours, as many or as few as need be, as if she were a professional or administrative employee. My experience with the National Labor Relations Board, where I held hearings to resolve these issues, it's my opinion, based on what I know, that she is not a professional employee, she is not a supervisory employee, she is not an administrative employee. And while I don't have expertise in FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act, I don't think she's an exempt employee. So, we can get ourselves in a lot of trouble if we don't dot our i's and cross our t's. We don't want to punish Ms. Stewart. We think she's doing a good job, as far as we know. She's not, that's not the problem. The problem is one of just having a managerial system in place where departments are cooperating with each other. We see ourselves as facilitating people. We want to work with them. We want to make life easy for everybody. But if everybody just goes off and does their own thing, we're in chaos. And the town cannot survive that way.
You mentioned to, there are certain certifications that are required by a position. And is somebody going to follow up and say, "Well, I'm in place"?
As I read the regulations, and again, I'm not an expert in Massachusetts law, but there are certain requirements that have to be fulfilled within two years. And one of them is having a licenser certification from the state. The new job description that the Board of Assessors submitted to us is, we believe, modeled on the description that came from East Hampton. There are certain deletions in the assessors' version. I think there has to be a discussion as to why those are not included in the current one. For example, being able to assess commercial property. And if there's a requirement for licensure, part of our recommendation would be that if she has not already done so, that Ms. Stewart, at our expense, would go and get the certification and attend, acquire the necessary training. But, and also work the hours that she was scheduled to work.
You're saying that they wanted to have the commercial certification?
My belief is that that is not included in the newest version of the job description.
I remember way back on the finance panel, we looked at that. There was an increase in the salary for that position. And that was one of the caveats of that position, isn't it?
You know, I have it with me. I'd be happy to check to be sure that I'm not misspeaking.
I don't think we should, I don't want to... Regress, we'll use that word, regress, and then give an increase on top of that. I think I'm happy with an adequate, good salary if all the qualifications are there and met.
Am I correct in remembering that when we looked at the job description that was submitted by the Board of Assessors and the job description from East Hampton, it is almost verbatim, with the exception of the few pieces that are not currently, the certifications that are not currently in the office? So...
We're doing a job description to the person?
Yes.
But I think what we have to look at is the job description that was approved in 2008. And it appears that there's not a great deviation there. So, I mean, I would, our recommendation is that she retains the wage increase. She'd be required to fulfill any deficiencies that she might have in terms of training and certification. But the big thing is to get the boards, the Board of Assessors in this instance, to play by the rules.
So, the old job description did include the industrial...
The commercial part.
Did.
So, we can talk about this all night long, but I think what really needs to happen, I pushed over so you could share the table and the microphone, so we stop getting text messages from home.
My microphone buddy.
I think what needs to happen is that the board needs to decide who's going to write a letter to the Board of Assessors, either the PQB with the support of the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Selectmen solely. I think it should be a joint venture, but... And list that, you know, whatever the reprimand is for not following the procedure and the request for the PCF within a month, did you say? Include the credentials that are required, so i.e. a new job description and/or the old one or some version of both, and resubmit them for, to follow the proper procedure.
You know, if procedure had been followed, they would submit that job description to us, ask us to score it, and at that time, we would have a discussion with them.
Right.
Which we weren't able to do because they didn't show up.
Right.
I'd also like to add that if this happens again, although the employee may not be at fault, we need to stop it and go back if it gets by us again, because otherwise, it's going to keep tumbling downhill.
Yeah, good point, John. I talked to Donna about this, and the employee that handles this is now fully trained and anything that comes through that deviates from the PCF, she will put her hands up.
So, it has to go through that person, no matter where it comes from?
Yes. And she profusely apologized, but it really, it wasn't her fault.
I can understand that.
I just have one more thing to say in just a second. Shannon, if you want to speak to it, you can. That's your own, that's your own opinion.
That's your own choice.
So, I'm just going to speak on fact of what I was in that meeting where the minutes were that you had read on that increase. So, it was back when Anna Pack was also on the board and she was chair. They had had a discussion about Lori's increase, and she had never, I guess, put it into effect. It was approved on the FY '14 for the effect of '15. It was a 3% increase for Lori and Janine at that time. So, that was approved at town meeting in their budget. And I guess they never put it into effect. So, at that meeting where I took the minutes, they had finally said, "Okay, you should put it into effect." Well, instead of it being 3%, they decided to do it a little bit higher, instead of doing a retroactive back to the beginning of the year.
What town meeting did you say it was voted at?
I think it was in...
The annual town meeting from previous years.
Right, because then it would have been...
So, fiscal '14?
Right, so it would have been for '15 this year, because that raise was supposed to be for fiscal '15.
So, in May of 2014? Can we just look into that?
What's going to have to happen, the only way to calculate that, because it's not a separate article, what it is, is it's part of the line item budget. So, what we have to do, because back then, both of the wages for the assistant and the principal assessor, or the, I'm sorry, the clerical person and the principal assessor... the clerical person and the, um, assess, principal assessor were actually merged into one line. So we have to go back and calculate and divide out based on what we believe their amounts to be and calculate and see what the actual numbers come out to be based on the hours they were working at the time and see if it's based on the current pay that would break down to twenty-two and some change or if it's higher. I can actually have Donna work on that now.
Thanks.
That was all I had to say.
Thank you. So is there a motion by the board to take some sort of action here?
I think I'll make a motion that we support the PQB's recommendation that a letter be written to the Board of Assessors with all the details that we discussed. I don't want to go through every, every one again. Is that kind of what you're looking for?
So it would include, A, a reprimand for not following procedures. B, the PCF form filled out. C, it needs to include credentials and job description with the ability to re-score if necessary.
So we have a job description on file. I think we should just.
Use that one.
Stay with that right now.
Okay.
The one I was on file in two thousand.
The one that's on file, not the one that was previous.
Should review what's in the personnel file.
So the ability to review what's in the personnel file and resubmit.
And also if the credentials that are needed aren't there to have a plan of action to get them within a reasonable amount of time.
Yes. So, um, there's a motion to do that. Is there a second? Can I second?
Sure.
Second. For further discussion, um, and I lost my train of thought. Oh, should we have the, would the, would you prefer the letter came from the Board of Selectmen or from the PQB with the support of the Board of Selectmen?
You know, my preference with you comes from you. We don't have any authority over the Board of Assessors.
Sure, so the letter can come with us with the support of the PQB. Okay, so there's a motion and a second on the table. Is there any other discussion?
I've got a discussion. Since we're a split vote, can, sorry, since we're a split vote, would you ladies mind, uh, giving some input?
I didn't want to vote because it's my department.
Okay, so there's one.
I just wanted to give the fact and that was it. That was the only reason, I don't want to get involved in it.
I'm just wondering if there's something else we could have a compromise with?
No, I mean, I didn't. I just feel uncomfortable because Lori has been there for a long time and she's doing a great job. And I don't, I don't want to, um, I feel like whatever she should have had, we should have known or all of a sudden to say, okay, now you have to be certified? I just don't want to treat her unfairly.
Well, we're not taking away any money that she's getting. We're not taking that away. We don't have an issue with what she's doing. We don't have an issue with her job. But if the job description that's in the file says A, then she needs to be doing A.
Yeah.
If it's not, then okay. But we're not taking away her money. It's not, that's, that's not the issue at all.
We just want to verify credentials against what's required. And if they're not up to date, give her an opportunity and a timeframe in order to bring them up to date so that she would be meeting the qualifications. That'll only help her and the town. It's, it's nothing against.
No, I understand that and that makes perfect sense. I just don't see that she's done anything wrong. All the, I've never heard a complaint of anything that she's done in the past.
We're, we're not, we're not saying that at all, Jackie.
Okay.
This is, this is basically, it's the Board of Assessors who usurped, you know, the, the bylaw and that's all we're bringing up. And nothing against Lori, uh, we agree.
Yeah.
And we're not, you know, and I think we've, we've said that multiple times here, that, uh, where there's no, nothing against Lori in, in this case.
Right, well, I just want to make it public that we support her and she's doing a good job.
Understand.
So there's a motion and a second. If there's no discussion, I'll call, no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of supporting a letter, a joint letter from the Personnel Policies and Procedures Board and the Board of Selectmen? Aye.
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 Any abstentions or nays? You would say abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you, PQB, for coming. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've done the town ministry report. John, we're going to go back to you for the Public Safety Complex Committee update that you.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay.
We're on two point two, Mrs. Walunas.
I still have no connection here. This, I guess. Do you have it?
You can have mine. Just kidding, I don't have a battery. I'm dead. Go ahead. Here's mine.
Let's, let's let them.
Oh, we're right here.
Let people come. There goes the crowd.
That's it, okay.
So this, this is for people at home evidently. Public Safety Committee, we met, uh, week before last at our regular meeting and discussed a vote at the, at the town meeting. Charlie couldn't be here, uh, so he asked me to bring it to the, the board. And basically what we did is we discussed the, the need for the fire department, the need for the police department, and the vote at the town meeting. And I think to all of us there, it was very clear that anybody who's even been near those buildings, we need a new fire station, we need a new police station. The issue that we felt at the town meeting was the price tag was so high that the town didn't want to vote, uh, for that price tag. So what we're doing, and, and Charlie is putting together, if he hasn't already, uh, an article for the paper. What we want to do is if we get the funding at the, uh, next election for the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we want to go back and have the architect design to a, a dollar amount that we give them, say, in the seven to eight million dollar range at the maximum. Because I think we all agree it's a nice place, it's, it's well laid out, a lot of space, but we don't have the money. So what can we get for X amount of money, say, in the seven or eight million dollar range that will meet the needs of the town? Doesn't have to be luxurious, has to be practical, and it has to, you know, fit the needs. So that's, so as the, uh, Safety Complex Committee is recommending per se that we go ahead and get people to vote for the ten point eight million. We'd rather just see that, not go anywhere and come back with a new plan for the proper dollar amount that we think the town will support. Because we think the issue is the money, not the need.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
So again, Tammy Walunas, um, with that being said, why on the ballot, number three and number four are now looking to be debt excusions, exclusions, but there's no dollar amount associated to it? So how is that being presented to people before, um, we go and fill out these absent ballot?
So let's, let's back up a second here. So in order to do a debt exclusion on Prop two and a half, there's a two-step process. One requires a referendum, which is a question, which you see on the ballot for that now. And the other one is an appropriation, which is the check amount, and that's something that comes from town meeting. According to the law, you don't have to do one or the other first. It doesn't matter which one. What order they're in does not matter. It's irrelevant. The point is that you have to have a yes on both. You can get a yes on the check amount first, the appropriation from town meeting, or you can get a yes from the referendum question, which is a yes or no. Now, if the people say on the date of the election, yes, we'd like to move forward, it's not automatically a certain amount. You then go to town meeting and you say, how much? So say we say we want a billion dollars. Town meeting says, we're not giving you a billion, we'll give you ten cents. Then you have ten cents to do with that appropriation. But that's the point, is this is actually the easier part of the whole piece. This is simply saying to the people, do you want this or don't you want this? Yes or no? No check gets automatically written with it. It brings it back to town meeting for discussion. But all this is simply doing is giving the people an opportunity to say, yes, we, we want to proceed with this and we want to see where we're going and what we can accomplish, or no? No, we don't. We're not interested. We don't want to move forward with this.
See, I don't think that looks clear at all when you look at it.
You know what? It probably doesn't, but the problem is when you get to Prop two and a half questions and debt exclusion questions, we have no say. It goes directly to, for the debt exclusion questions for that and the fuel tanks, it goes straight over to bond counsel. Bond counsel says, this is what you're going to write for your question. That's in compliance with Prop two and a half. That's what you're moving forward with. When you go to the Prop two and a half questions, we go strictly out of this book from DOR. And that's the way the question is. We have no flexibility. We don't have the ability, like we do at town meeting, to write that little caveat that says, when you're voting for this, you're voting for it at this percent. And, and remember, at this point with the Public Safety Complex, the amount of money that it is is irrelevant. The whole point of this thing is the referendum question, yes or no? If the town says ultimately, yes, we want to do this, then we go back again to town meeting and we say, what are we writing the check for and what amount? This does not automatically approve whatever amount it was discussed before town meeting. All this does is says to the town, yes. Yes, we think this is a good idea. Let's talk about the check amount again. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I can try to, we.
Tell a friend.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to highly promote that.
Well, we can.
Yeah, because people are already filling out the absent valenti, valenti.
Absentee ballots?
Yes.
Those.
And, um, and that is not clear. Same as the school increase, uh, you know? Okay.
Can we get, excuse me, can we get, uh, uh, something in the paper explaining this?
Well, we can't publicize anything, but what we can do is see if we can get some press coverage, because if they ask questions, we can answer them. But unfortunately, we can't, being the, the government entity itself, we can't start releasing public information on this piece.
But the committee can, correct?
I think it's, it's going to be, it, there's a lot of laws going into campaign finance, so it's a little more specified than that. We can look in to see what their options are. But like Curtis from the Public Safety Complex, um, consultant, he can, because he's not involved in any way. He's not directly hired by the town. He's not employed by the town. He's a separate entity.
So what about South Hampton News? That is a email that goes out to many people here in town. If we addressed that, and that's our moderator that writes that, the, um.
The moderator writes that? So you would need to talk to him about that.
And getting specific.
That's not a town-sponsored thing. That's Mr. Floyd.
Right, but I mean, that gets out to a lot of people. If we could get out there exactly what this is going to do and why there is no dollar amount associated to this and what this yes vote would do, and then what the next steps are at the next meeting.
The best way to get Mr. Floyd to pick stuff up like that is to get it in the newspaper. And when he publishes the newspaper article the next day, he'll incorporate it in as part of the news. So what I'd say again is, you know, I'm more than happy for the board to reach out to the Gazette, the Republican, twenty-two, forty, and see if we, actually, yeah, I'd see if we can get them to inquire in. So maybe we'll just do a press release saying there's a ballot coming, there's a bunch of questions coming up on the ballot in July and we'd love to share information with you if you want to stop in.
Okay. All right. Thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome. Okay, so we were.
We still have committees?
Do you have more?
We got one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. The Greenway Negotiation Committee. We met last week and we're going over the details of the purchase and sale. And there's some questions on who owns what part of the, the railroad, Butters, the railroad. So we're going back and forth with legal on, pardon?
I don't think you can talk about that in public.
I think we're going to wait for, um, since things aren't finalized on that piece, I think just saying the work, that we're in the process of.
Details, but.
But I think just even, I would say just, we're in the process of working with the PNS.
We're in the process of working out details.
Yeah. Um, I just want to update the board. Donna just stopped back in. She looked up what I had asked her to. So for FY fifteen, what was approved was the amount of sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars for what was called the assistant assessor's wages. Again, at that point in time, that encompassed both the clerical and also the principal assessor's wages. So Lori, and at the time it was Janine. It, this is based on the number of hours they worked per week. So for Janine, she was currently at that point in time making seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents an hour and she was working thirty, sixty-two hours bi-weekly, which put her at twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars and four cents. And Lori at the time was making twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents an hour and was working thirty-five hours a week. That put her at forty thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. If Janine had continued working and had not got the job in May, they would have balanced out at sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, which was already two thousand dollars higher than what they were budgeted for for FY fifteen, which would have meant that if that was the case, then they would have had to furlough. So I do not believe it to be the case that it was budgeted in the FY fifteen budget to give increases, because at these numbers, they would have had two thousand dollars overage.
Thanks for the clarification. Moving on. We are at Continued Business, um, four point two. Um, we're bringing this up because there's been some emails back and forth between board members. So we have performance reviews for both the fire chief and the accountant scheduled for June thirtieth. We decided at the past meeting to conduct the same, the same way that we had in the past and to review them before the entire board. The options that we had reviewed in the past that were available to us were the same process and form as the last time. Uh, the same process and form as the last time, reviewed through a liaison to the Board of Selectmen, one-on-one, and a three hundred and sixty, a three sixty-five review before the board and a three sixty-five review with the liaison. So given that there's been some conversations back and forth between board members and emails and fire chiefs, the fire chief requested that his review be done in executive session, but the law is very clear that that is not an option. It has to be done in open session. So I just want to make sure that the board is still on the same page to move forward with what we have agreed upon and voted at the last meeting. Um, and before we do that, I just also wanted to say that we have, as a board, need to be very careful when emails are flying back and forth, because you can't respond and make decisions because it's a serious violation of the open meeting law. So generally, when emails go, we read them and don't respond, um, unless it's, you know, you know it's one-on-one and you're very careful with your response, because emails are then, um, can be, what is the word I'm looking for?
Subpoenaed?
Requested for public records plus.
Yeah.
Public records?
Right, so one thing we want to try and avoid is the, um, conversations back and forth between folks. But I wanted to make sure we're still proceeding the way we had previously decided. That's why that's on the agenda.
Okay. I would like to, um, I am on vacation on June thirtieth and I'd like to move the performance evaluations to be reviewed on July fourteenth, if possible.
I'm not available.
So what about after that?
So these were supposed to be done in February? April?
But we all need to be here, so.
How does the board wish to proceed?
Is there a compromise date in between?
I'm, I'm leaving. If we're not meeting the thirtieth, I'm leaving next Wednesday. If we're meeting the thirtieth, I'm staying home for my vacation to be at the meeting.
When are you coming back?
Not until the week after July fourteenth.
July four?
I very rarely miss any meetings, except in July when we go to Block Island.
I think we should have a full board.
It's just a nice vacation. That's good. So you're coming back when?
The week of the fourth, so probably sometime that week.
Okay. So the twenty-first?
So we want to push this off a whole nother month.
I'm, no, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that's the only day with your schedule. And, uh.
So what day will you be at? The twenty-first?
I can be available on the twenty-third. The week, oh, you're, sorry, you're in June.
July?
Go to July. I'll be back the week of the, the twentieth, so the twenty-first. If you want to push it off that far.
Sounds good.
I'll be here.
I'll be here. Anybody know about Charlie?
No.
Charlie's usually available, but I do know he's going to, um, on a trip at some point, either the end of July or end of August. I don't remember which one.
He must be tentative the twenty-first until we hear back. We'll hear back from Charlie tomorrow.
Delaying it by.
A month.
Three weeks.
I'm okay if you guys want to move forward without me.
I think we should all be there. I think it's important enough.
So I would accept a motion to change the date of the performance evaluation for the town accountant and the fire chief.
So moved.
Is, to July twenty, to July twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Is there a second?
Second.
A, a question. Do we need to move the town accountant as well? Does everybody?
I think fair, if you're going to have a full board for one, you have to have a full board for all of them.
Okay, fair enough.
So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Moving forward, um, we have a discussion about the adoption of Board of Selectmen policies for meetings and the attached policies. So this item was scheduled for this evening. It's also been scheduled for every meeting dating back to February or so. There's been a lot of revisions on this policy thus far and they've been exchanged via email. Some on the same, some on not, some in red, green, purple, pink, um, all sorts of different colors, but unfortunately not. but unfortunately, not all on the same document. So the ultimate goal was to put something in place to work from. We also held off on deciding how to move forward with the appointments and reappointments, per the request of the Finance Committee was one of their concerns, until we could discuss this and adopt a policy. Since we currently do not have a full board, which we knew last, at our last meeting, that we wouldn't have a full board, and there's so many differences in the document, it may be best to go through those policies, section by section, as a full board. In the meantime, at a minimum, we need to determine how we wish to go forward with the annual appointments and reappointments on the 6/30 agenda. So I think in fairness to the Finance Committee, they're kind of waiting to see how to fill the position on their board, and attached somewhere, you gave me a pile of them, Heather.
It's a loose sheet, I handed it them out.
A loose sheet like this, which is a recommendation that came from Heather and the board's commissions and committees meeting the other night, so that perhaps we could spend some time going on this, going, making some decisions on this, so that we can move forward with appointments at the beginning of the fiscal year. Before I keep going, Michael would like to speak.
Michael Rosenberg, Finance Committee, just as an update, both of our candidates have pulled their names out of the hat due to personal reasons. So please do not make any special appropriations for what we were going through. We are a four-member board at the moment, so.
That being said, how does the board wish to proceed? Jackie, I know that you want to have a full board for this, but at least it can be, we don't have to vote on anything, but we could have conversations. And so those policies have been out there for a long time. If you could even just look at them and send some, even just changes to the appointments part via email to Heather, so she can, you know, correlate them and get them all together for people, we can at least have a conversation. It doesn't mean that we have to vote on it, it just means we start the conversation.
Well, could we, I'd like to move it to August 11th, deadline for, you know, reviews and everything to be done, and have reviews and talk about discussions now, before, but be absolutely done by August 11th.
Right, so we can continue to talk about this on the 30th, just a discussion.
Right.
Yeah, so we don't have to, we don't have to stop anything, we're just going to continue to talk about it at the June 30th meeting. So if you have anything that you want included in that initial conversation, submitting them to the whole board in the document would be very helpful.
Liz, two things, perhaps we can start by taking this piecemeal and maybe do one piece at a time, and then put it all together by August 11th.
So let's.
There's a couple of things, like the appointment section is here, and it's not very long, probably won't take us very long to go through it right now.
Let's do that.
There's a dog hearing section that's gonna be absolutely pertinent, because we have to get dog hearings before the board, and if we don't have a policy to do it in, it's not gonna be fair to everybody.
Okay, I'm okay with going through the appointments part of it tonight. Is there any objection?
Nope.
Ladies, do you have any objection to going through the appointments part now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna read it, and you stop me when you want, when you have something to say. "The board makes numerous appointments each year. Appointments are generally made for one or three years in length. In no case may appointments be made for more than three years unless specifically allowed by state law." Are there any positions like that?
Planning Board, Cultural Counsel are the two major ones that I can think of.
And how long are theirs?
I think one's five and one's eight.
And those are allowed by law?
Yep.
Okay. "Appointments generally are made June 30th of each year. In the case of appointments, a second to the nomination and motion will be required for board action." I don't know what that means. "In the case of appointments."
I, Liz, nominate Peter Cotton.
So the same way we always do everything? Okay, thanks.
Yes.
"Whenever possible, the board shall seek, will seek variety in backgrounds, Cory checks his C-O-R-I. Interests, ages, sex, and geographic areas of residence, so that a true cross-section of the community will be reflected. In order to attract qualified and interested persons, vacancies will be made in public as far in advance of appointment as practical." Practical. Practical. That spelled right? Practicable? "Vacancies could be advertised in the local paper as well as on cable TV." Can we add anything else, you know, social media or anything?
I would just put it out on social media.
And town website?
Well, that's part, yeah, we can put that specific.
As well as on other formats or something?
Something general. So we capture all of.
I would ex-nay the local paper piece, because we start getting into that, we start talking about.
You have to pay for it.
Yeah.
All right, so let's take that part out.
It just says could, but, you know.
But we don't, we're trying to get away from the ambiguity.
True.
Okay.
"Appointments should be based on merit and qualifications rather than political merit."
Well, merit and political merit.
Should be based on. Merit, I'll have to figure that part out.
Can't be political.
"The town administrator will provide by May 1st a list of the appointment vacancies to be filled by the board. Notify the chairman of the appropriate board or committee requesting recommendations regarding reappointment or filling of vacancies. Notify incumbents and request their statements of availability regarding reappointment." You want that responsibility to be on you, Heather, or do you want it to be on the chairman of each board and committee and commission?
Well, we met with the BCC on last Wednesday, so representative from, for many of the boards, committees, and commissions in town, one of their recommendations was actually to, because I have a master contact list that we can update annually, to simply send it out as one sheet and ask folks from each of the boards to look and see whose expiration is coming up, and to check with them and see if they're interested, because if it is one person checking with all of them, as we've gone through before, we're talking 50-plus people every year, which is quite a task.
So you would send that master sheet to each board or commission, and the chairman of that board would reach out?
Within a week or so, and get back and notify me if they're gonna move forward or not.
So since this, sorry, so this is a first pass at this, can you rework that to reflect what you just said?
Yes.
Thanks. "If a vacancy occurs or is expected within 30 days on a board or committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen, the following procedures will be used to fill the vacancy. It is the responsibility of the chairman of the board or committee to notify the Board of Selectmen of all vacancies, i.e. the Conservation Commission would tell us they have an opening, the Board of Assessors would tell us they have an opening."
Yes, and that's already the requirement, master and laws, for those who are elected committees, so it's just keeping it the same.
"The vacancy will be announced during the selectmen's reports at the next regularly-scheduled selectmen's meeting. Notice of the vacancy, along with a deadline for the submission of applications to fill the position, will be sent to the town clerk, local media outlets, posted on the town's website, and posted on the cable access bulletin board." So that wording should probably be the same as wherever you're going to post the vacancies, it can be consistent. And should, when it says a vacancy along with a deadline, should the deadline from the time of notification be consistent along all the boards? So should there be a specific time frame in there, like one week, 20 days? I know we do something now, but maybe we need to be more uniform.
I guess what I would recommend, because we've gotten into glitches in the past with the presumption that we've had a past practice of using 20 days, is because it's not specified by law as far as the appointed boards and committees go, that perhaps we come up with the standard of a smaller period of time, so saying a minimum of seven days. I mean, a lot of positions get posted for six months and they're not filled, but if we can give ourselves a smaller minimum, so that, you know, the next board meeting comes around, we can do an appointment if we need to fill the position.
I'm, go ahead.
Can we have a minimum date and leave it open after then?
Well, I would say, you know, it has to be posted for a minimum of seven days.
Right, and then.
But that's it.
You can stay posted.
You just say minimum, there's no max, so it could be 12 years.
Are there any concerns with that minimum of seven days?
Okay.
"Individuals who wish to be considered to fill the vacancy must complete a volunteer application available at Town Hall and on the town website, with all requests being delivered to the town administrator either in writing or by email." Do you want that volunteer application to go to you or to the?
I think it should go to the boards.
I would say if it goes to me, it's easier, because that way I can get all of them, not all the boards actually check their mail, and some of them.
Or me every week, that's true.
So I have a question. So if it's the particular board or committee that is looking for another member, why wouldn't it go directly to them?
Because they're not responsible for all the filing and keeping of records in the town, I am. So if I'm responsible for it, it's easier for me to physically have it and disperse it as needed, as opposed to having to hunt it down. We're running the same problem with job applications and everything else. We have no central warehouse of where they're all going, so essentially, at some point, we're gonna get in trouble if we ever get audited, because I don't have the records, because they're not coming to one office.
Not only that, but, I mean, I don't know when the Conservation Commission meets, or, you know, even the PQB is only scheduled to meet once a month. So if you are a volunteer and you want to be on the, on one of those committees that only meets once a month, and you have nowhere to leave your application, essentially, unless you run into that person at big Y and say, "Here it is," you're stuck. You can't, nobody even knows you're interested, because you can't give it to anyone.
Yeah, and plus.
So each board or committee doesn't have a contact email or whatever?
They may, but it doesn't mean that they necessarily check it, and you do have to have all of that stuff in one file, it has to be somewhere central.
Yeah, plus, these are all volunteer boards, and I know when I was on the Finance Committee, you don't know when they're coming in or when they're going. And when the town administrator handles it, it's in your box for the next meeting, and she can also send you an email saying there's applications in there. So one central repository of somebody who's here all the time, I think is.
I mean, we're looking for volunteers left and right, so we need to make it as easy and convenient for them to volunteer their time, not search down the chairman of one committee.
Right.
Should I keep going?
Yeah.
"The application should contain all their contact information, including an email address, the name of the board they're interested in joining, why they're interested, and provide a brief personal background or outline. If a volunteer application is currently on file from a previous vacancy, the individual will be contacted to see if they wish to be considered for the current vacancy. If so, the volunteer application on file shall suffice as their expression of interest in the position." "The town administrator's office will distribute copies of the applicant's volunteer application to all selectmen and to the chairman of the prospective board or committee for their review. Within one week after the deadline for the submission of applications, the Board of Selectmen will schedule time on the agenda of their next regular meeting to act on the applications it has received." All right, hold on. Town administrator's office, which is, all selectmen, all right, that part I agree with, the first sentence I agree with. "Within one week after the deadline for the submission of applications, the Board of Selectmen will schedule time on the agenda of their next regular meeting to act on the application." When you say "act on," do you mean?
So in other words, if we receive a application for the vacancy, say there's a vacancy in CONCOM, and let's just say for the heck of it that we said the deadline was June 1st, so by June 8th, you guys should all have received a copy of it in Dropbox or wherever we put, usually Dropbox, that says, okay, here's the application for the CONCOM person. Essentially, what it is, is you'll get a copy before it's on the Board of Selectmen agenda.
Notification.
It's just what we're doing now, that's all it is. So before you guys appointed someone last year, you always had a copy of the volunteer application in your packet to review ahead of time. So when it gets to, do we want to, do we want to appoint Johnny? You have Johnny's application in front of you, okay, review Johnny's application, I think, yes, we should appoint him to the CONCOM.
So my question then is, it says, "The Board of Selectmen will schedule time on the agenda of their next regular meeting to act on the applications it has received." Why do we need to schedule time if we want the committee to go through that?
I'll rework it.
Okay, thanks, because I don't want to schedule time if the committee hasn't seen the applications yet.
So usually, what happened in the last fiscal year is, what I generally did, with the exception of right now, we're getting into the new appointment season, is when I got an application, I would send it over, like Greenway took a while, they wanted to meet, they wanted to, they wanted to talk to the different people who are interested, they wanted to see if they actually had a commitment and would be a good fit. It took them sometimes three weeks, four weeks, to meet with the individual and have them come to a couple of meetings. They said, "Yes, Heather, you know, I really think this is a good candidate, can you now put him on before the Board of Selectmen?" At that time, we moved forward. Everyone got the application, it said, you know, recommended by the Greenway, and the board appointed. I'll rework the sentence.
Thanks. "The Selectmen will hold an interview to meet all new applicants. Interviews may be requested by the Board of Selectmen but are not required for reappointments." Don't, don't we want the committee to hold it?
It's up to the board how they wish to proceed. Once upon a time, the Board of Selectmen interviewed all applicants for these positions. We got away from that over time, because we found we had less and less people who were interested in volunteering. The only time it's come up to actually interview them thus far has been when it's been a contested piece. So you get five applications for one position, you bring five people and really see who is the best candidate for the position. Otherwise, most of the time, you get Sally, and Sally's the only one who's been interested in four years, so we move forward. We try to encourage Sally.
So I, I understand your need to encourage people, but I think that the board, commissioner, committee probably knows more what they're looking for than the Board of Selectmen does, so I would suggest that they need to meet with them first, and/or, if it's only one person, a joint meeting?
For one person, you mean two people?
Two. I, I just think that the board or committee needs to interview them first before we see them.
I'll rewrite that, that's essentially what they do now, but we can rework that.
Just so it's more clear and less ambiguous.
Yes, ma'am.
Word of the evening.
And where it says interviews by the Board of Selectmen, take out "by the Board of Selectmen" too, because we want the committee to interview them.
Well, I think what Liz was saying is, if it's more than two applicants, then it would be either a joint or, yeah, probably a joint meeting would be easiest, between the board themselves and the Board of Selectmen.
Then you'll have to meet once with the person.
The other side, though, if there are multiple applicants, say for the Finance Committee, they have three of them, and they really think one is heads above the other, I would think that they could recommend that one to the board.
Absolutely.
But that's also different, John, because they're an elected board, so they're actually governed by master and law first.
So what is that?
So that means, that means for master and law, what generally happens, if it's an elected board, they have a period of time in which a vacancy occurs to actually notify the Board of Selectmen. From that point in time, they then have a period of time to notify the Board of Selectmen who they wish for the seat. The only time it then becomes a matter of the Board of Selectmen and them jointly appointing is after you get to such a period of time that has elapsed. And then there's no specific procedure we are required to follow by that means. But we can, you know what we'll do? We'll post in here a copy of the master and law governing that, so that everyone is clear of the distinction between elected and appointed.
Okay. "All interview appointments will appear on the agenda of a regularly-scheduled selectmen's meeting." It's.
No.
No.
Take out selectmen.
Can you rework that whole part, and we will revisit at the second reading?
I circled number four.
Thank you. Moving on to number five. "The Board of Selectmen will review or discuss all nominees in public session, make the appointments, and notify the following parties of their selection: all applicants, the board or committee to which they are appointed, and the town clerk. All appointments shall run June 30th in the year that the term, shall run until June 30th in the year that the term expires, unless otherwise noted at the time of appointment, or in the case of an elected office which shall expire at the time of the next town election."
There's some changes.
Where? Right here?
All these, yeah.
Okay, so.
It kind of goes along with what's above it. The board committee versus.
Okay, so this revision says, "The board or committee will review or discuss all nominees."
Make the appointments.
Make the appointments and notify the, the. And notify the Board of Selectmen of their selection. All right, can you give this to Heather and let her take this?
She has this, this is something that was submitted.
Is that my copy?
As one of the, from one of the select boards.
So just double-check and make sure you have this, and rework that. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. That was positive. Nice job. So if you could do that and bring that back to us on the 30th, that would be excellent. Moving on. Let's see.
Can we maybe have another section or two or three that we have to review before the next meeting and put our comments in, so she can come?
Dog hearings, please.
So, so if everyone could look at the dog hearing piece that you have in your policies, and be prepared to discuss those on the 30th. If you don't have it, just ask Heather, and she will email you another copy. Next, we have discuss, oh, we did that. We are down to signature 6.1, personnel change forms. Could you pass those down, please?
If you read them off of your agenda, they're all ready to be signed on that sheet.
Thanks.
Can you do 4.2.6?
4.2.
Dates of meetings.
Dates of meetings.
That was under the policies, it's not, it's part of the policies. Do we want to make it a policy that we meet the first and third week? Do we want to make it a policy that we meet every other week? It will come in a section as we discuss them. So we have PCFs for, the first is for Mark Thoreau, resignation from the Fire Department. Next, we have, I'm gonna do them all at once, unless someone has something that they disagree with. We have a PCF for David Moret, promotion and pay change from paramedic firefighter at $21.36 an hour to EMS coordinator slash lieutenant for $24.36 an hour. The third is for Kelly Stanton, new hire as a paramedic firefighter. James Struthers as a new hire as an EMT. Those three at the fire station, the fire chief has said that it will not change his budget. He's had three resignations, and so you see three hires, and chances are, it should be pretty close to even. And the last is for Tom Gaugan, the water superintendent, a change of pay from $65,000 a year to $66,300, which is a 2% increase. At our last meeting, I asked Mr. Neal about it and asked him to submit a PCF, which they did. I would, I would accept a motion to sign A, B, C, and D, and I would like to vote on E separately. and I would like to vote on E separately. So I would accept a motion to sign the resignation for Mark Thoreau and the PCS for David Moret, Kelly Stanton, and James Struthers.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is for Tom Gaugan, which is the Water Superintendent. There's a PCF. It's been signed off by Town Accountant, verifying that there's money in the account, the PQB. So I would accept a motion to sign the PCF for Thomas Gaugan. Would anyone like to make the motion to sign the PCF? It's a 2% increase. It's, comes from an enterprise fund. There's really not much oversight that we have of that account.
Why is the increasing coming?
Because the Water Commissioner said that he could have a raise per his contract.
So it's-
When was he hired?
He was hired, I don't know, nine months ago, eight months ago. It's effective July 1st.
It, it's not a contract.
What is it?
Just to clarify. I, let's put it this way, it's not a contract per master general laws.
So an agreement between the Water Commissioners and himself?
Is in writing?
There are certain contracts that are permitted by Massachusetts general laws, and those pertain to the accountant, the town administrator, town manager, the police chief, the fire chief, and that's pretty much all master general laws allows without a special act. There are certain things called job offer letters, which are not considered a contract in the master general laws for that piece. It's simply clarifying the terms that they already know. You know, this is your salary based on the job description, this is the time of vacation, et cetera.
It has been signed off by the Town Accountant, saying that there's money in there, and by the policies and procedures, who I just sat through that meeting, and it was a four to one vote that we signed the paperwork, since the job of the PQB is just to make sure that paperwork is filled out appropriately. Mike, maybe you have some input here.
Uh, just two items, quickly. When we had done the, I guess it was sort of an ad hoc meeting with the Water Department, because we didn't get their budget in time for review, I think it just coincidentally was brought before the Select Board when we were in here. We specifically asked the questions, were there any raises included in next year's budget? And we were told no. My second point, and this does, it aligns with some of the assessor conversations and, and just the, the payroll and pay increase conversation. We've gone through this budget cycle with a no pay increase mantra for all departments. So departments that, and individuals that may deserve raises, that have been here for a very long time, they're not given raises because that was our direction. To see a raise on here for an employee who's been here for less than a year is a bit, it's disheartening towards our process. It's going to be disheartening for the other town employees because if one deserves 2% because they've been here for a year, then all should deserve 2%. But unfortunately, the way the budget is lined up, you know, we're doing budget transfers to pay for electric bills, to pay for stamps today. We had to give out, you know, emergency funds for that. So giving raises to give raises is, is not appropriate, and it really, it undermines the process we went through for the budget this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would accept a motion to, you could make a motion to not sign, or you could make a motion to sign. You could make, I don't think you can do nothing. It's here, so someone needs to make a motion, one way or another. Whether you all agree you don't want to sign it, or you all agree you do want to sign it, we have to do something with it.
I make a motion to not sign.
There's a motion to not sign the PCF, and based on what reasoning? So that we have something in our minutes, so that people understand why.
Why I want to not sign it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the Finance Committee stated it was not in the budget, and I have not seen a good reason on why there's a pay increase of only being employed nine months.
Just to clarify that, I think the, the budget items, I don't know if it specifically called out the, the salary for that one individual. I think it's the combination. So without dissecting it, I can't say that it wasn't in there, but it was specifically asked, were there any raises, and we were told no.
No. So there's a motion on floor to not sign the PCF.
I'm going to second it just for the conversation.
There's a second. I'll open it for conversation.
I, I guess going along with what Mike was saying and what we were hearing from the PQB, it'd be nice if we had somebody coming in, maybe explaining better to us why. I'm not saying he doesn't deserve it, but I'm not saying why we should do one person out of, you know, the town.
So my question, Heather, is if the, the Board of Selectmen doesn't sign this, what happens to the raise?
I don't have an answer to the question. We have two problems. Number one, it's an elected board. Number two, it's a completely dependent, independent funding. It's the enterprise fund, which doesn't come from the general fund. So it usually goes back to Massachusetts general laws and the regulations of who controls the accounting. Generally, when it comes to general funds, and there's a board that controls it, they can spend within the limitation of the funds itself. So if they're given $10, they can spend $10. They can't spend 11. However, when you're looking at the enterprise fund, it's similarly situated. So if they budget to do $12, they can only spend $12. But the problem is they're, they operate more independently than the regular departments, even those governed by elected officials. So what I can do is I can find out the answer. I do not have the answer.
Okay.
I guess another question would be is, do, does this actually have to come before us?
Well, we had asked for a PCF, because if you're going to expect the check that's going to get cut out of Donna's office, and we're asking her to follow a procedure, which is you don't give raises without a PCF, then yes, this needs to come before us, because there's a procedure that needs to be followed. So at the last meeting, were you here?
Yeah.
And I had said to Mr. Neal, there's a, there's, is this true? And he said, "Yes," and I requested the PCF, which he did. But I would say that if you're going to give raises, it doesn't matter what department you're from, whether you govern your own money or you don't. If you want the town to cut you a check, you need to follow the town's rules.
No, I, I agree. It's just that Heather was saying maybe the rules are different, so are we clashing up against? And we won't know that until she gets an answer. I agree with you on the paperwork.
So there's a motion to not sign the PCF. There's a second. Is there any other discussion? So we'll take a vote. You're voting on what, on to not sign. All those in favor of not signing the PCF, say aye.
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 Any nays or abstentions?
I am going to nay, because my understanding of enterprise fund, it is an independent fund, and didn't I hear that they did agree to the raise, the PCB? I mean, did I, did I hear that?
The PQB's purview, the role of them is to just make sure that the paperwork is filled out. And so the paperwork is filled out appropriately. So they said, "Okay."
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm aware of the enterprise fund, and I, I, um, while I do believe that it's not fair that they get a raise, I just know that it is an independent fund, and it doesn't affect the, our budget, you know? Because they have their own.
So is that a yea, a nay, or a abstention?
It's a nay, because I don't feel that it's the same, it's in the same basket.
So we are not going to sign the PCF for the raise for the Water Commissioner, three to one. Next, we have carryover vacation requests. The PQB regulations allow for us to carry over up to one week of vacation time. It's in Section 11.4. Only under extraordinary circumstances and with the advance approval of the PPPB, the appropriate department head will, and the appropriate department head will exceptions be granted. This applies only to non-contractual employees. It does not apply to contracted employees. So the first is, we have a letter of request from Heather, and to, to carry over one week of vacation. But one of the issues we found with your request at the PQB meeting-
Is I spelt the word wrong?
Um, no, actually, you said, "I have been able to use my time."
Oh, yes, un-
So you would like to reword your letter to-
I would love for you to reword my letter.
So her request is, "I wish to, I wish to request permission to carry over one week of vacation time into fiscal year 16. I have not been able to use my time." I would accept a motion to approve the one-week carryover for Heather Budrowitz. Her contract reads, "With the permission of the Board, the Town Administrator may carry over up to one week, 40 hours, of unused flex time in the subsequent year."
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that, because I was saying, she doesn't have really vacation time per se. It's flex time.
Yes.
So we should alter it to say one week of flex time, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So with those two corrections, I'll make a motion, we accept the carryover.
Is there a second? Might I add that your vacation time is earned? So if you don't carry it over, you have to pay them out.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of one-week carryover of vacation time for Heather Budrowitz, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It has to be used in the next fiscal year. Yes.
Is that four zero?
Is that four, Shannon, are you, yes or no?
I have no opinion on that.
So then you would need to abstain?
Abstain.
So you want, we got to change that.
I have a, a quick question. So if an employee doesn't carry over to the following year, so say they have two weeks, and then now the next week they have three weeks, and then they can't use one of those weeks, so you can really continuously carry over?
Only carry over one week.
It doesn't, you don't get additional-
Right, so when the following year they have three weeks, they'd still have like two weeks to that current year, so you could still carry over one week to the next year.
This is good for one shot.
Yeah, but just, just to clarify here, especially in a contract, I don't go up in vacation time. Until my contract expires, I get the exact same number of flex days annually. It's not like I get five weeks this year, six weeks next year, seven weeks the year after, and a week always carries over specifically.
I don't, what's your question then?
My question is, is if you get two weeks-
Yeah, and you don't use them.
Right, you only use ones, you want to carry over one.
Yeah.
So then the following year, you have your two weeks, and then you have the carried-over week.
Yes.
So now you've only used two weeks again. You can continue to carry over another week into the following year. So you're always carrying it over?
Mm-hmm.
But that's only one extra week in any given period that you can't take. Once you take it, it's gone.
Okay. The next is a carryover from Fire Chief Workman, and I will read his letter into the record. "Select Board, I have just under three weeks vacation that there is no way I can take, given the critical circumstances that surround the Fire Department at this time. I would like to carry over this one time, two weeks. If I can get a day here or there before the end of the fiscal year, I will do my best to use some time, but there's no way for me to responsibly use all the time I have available. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Chief Workman." The PQB voted to approve one week of carryover, as the Fire Chief's contract states. With prior approval of the Board, the Chief may be allowed to carry up to one week of vacation time for use in the next, in the next fiscal year. I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion, we allow the Chief to carry one week over per his contract.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of allowing the Fire Chief to only carry over one week of vacation time, say aye.
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 Is that four?
Yep. The next is for the Water Superintendent. He is requesting the approval to carry over 40 vacation hours from fiscal 15 to fiscal 16. Is there a motion to sign?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion?
No.
So all those in favor of signing one week carryover for the Water Superintendent, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We also have a one-week carryover for Todd J. Roz at the Highway Department. The union language in their contract defers to the PQB bylaws, which would say, "Only under extraordinary circumstances." His letter reads, "I've been unable to use all of my vacation time due to operational needs of the Highway and Water Departments. I'm requesting that the maximum of one week of vacation time be allowed by policy be carried over to fiscal 16." Randall also sent a letter of support to the carryover, which meets the bylaw requirement that the department head grant that time as well. It's been signed off by the PQB. There's a note here by Randall that says, "I fully support and endorse this." So I would accept a motion to carry one week for Todd J. Roz at the Highway Department.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have a carryover of one week of vacation time for Chief Silverner at the Police Department.
And just to let you know on this one, he did send an email afterwards. He was out on vacation. So I wanted to make sure I got this in on the agenda. I spoke to Officer Goyette, who spoke, who spoke over to the Police Chief and said, "Yes, I'd like to put this on the agenda." He then followed up with the email. I thought I emailed it out to everyone. I might not have. I was unable to pull it up before this meeting. Unfortunate.
So we have a request by Chief Silverner to carry over one week. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have a one-day liquor license. We have two one-day liquor licenses.
Just to note on that, one was not on the agenda because it came in last minute, like today.
Is that the second one?
Yes.
All right, so let's do this one at a time. The first is an application for Joshua in April Night for a one-day wine and malt-only license at Conan Park on Sunday, June 21st, from 12:00 to dusk for a party and barbecue. Application fee, application fee hold harmless and a copy of the Conan Park permit have all been submitted. I would accept a motion to sign.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second is an application for, for Suzette Sebel for a one-day wine and malt-only license at Conan Park on Saturday, June 20th, for, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for a party. The application fee hold harmless and copy of the Conan Park permit have all been submitted. During past years, the Board of Selectmen approved the Chair to sign licenses that came in outside of the timeline for our meetings. So for example, if we weren't meeting this week and something came in on Monday for a party on Saturday, we approved that the Chair would have the ability to sign off, given that all of the information is available and has been turned in. So the application, this application was received today, and I'd like to allow on the agenda for discussion and a vote. So I would accept a motion to sign the one-day liquor license for Suzette Sebel.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a letter of continued support of project and plan change for the Safe Roots to School Sidewalk Project. The project was discussed by Heather at the last meeting. The Department of Transportation and Safe Roots to School, Heather and Randall met earlier this month. The letter will affirm the Board's support for this project and also remove country road from the plans to follow the projects, to allow the project to proceed. The Board of Selectmen has previously signed a letter of support. This is the same letter of support, but the country road that we're talking about is actually a private way that goes into Country Garden Estates, or whatever that's called. So I need, I would accept a motion to sign the letter of support and change for the Safe Roots to School Project.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next is the FRTA, Franklin Regional Transit Association, Senior Van Contract Renewal. Annually, we renew the FRTA's contract with the town to provide the senior van for transportation. The contract for the van was included in the packets. Does anybody have any questions? I would accept a motion to sign the renewal for the FRTA Senior Van Contract.
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that blue ink?
No.
Got to be blue.
So you have a blue pen?
Oh, yeah, I do. You got one?
Where do you see blue?
Heather.
It's on, uh, it's more so on the FRTA piece.
That way they can tell it's the original.
Gotcha.
Okay, here's the FRTA. Copy one.
Sign and write.
By the way, which one of you two is the clerk that I'm doing all this work?
Well, normally she sits down there, but that microphone is broken, so. We did, in October.
It's in the beginning?
It's in the beginning of the year. It was cold.
It's the same thing, except a copy.
What a fine clerk.
What a fine clerk you are.
It's my old job.
So that's why you moved up here, you should have been here on time.
You got that.
Thank you. So the next, has everyone had a chance to look at the payroll and the bill warrants? Yes, everyone's had a chance to look at them. So, I'm going to read them today. I'm not the clerk, but, let's start with, there's not a bill warrant, right? Payroll, payroll, school. These are bills on the top, so let's start with the bill warrants. Heather, would you do me a favor on the payroll warrants and pull, thanks. We have a payroll warrant for 2,000, payroll warrant 15-50V in the amount of $2,562.30. I just need someone to say motion and someone to say second after I read each one of these.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a payroll deduction warrant for the amount of negative? Do you know why these two payrolls have negative amounts on them?
I'd have to look at them.
Did we overpay? That would be positive.
Maybe they're.
And that's a school lunch and that's not me.
It might just be the way it's typing, I don't necessarily think it's, I don't, I don't know, but just to clarify, they're a different letter than we usually have, it's 15, W-15-50V.
Be the end of the year.
So, I don't know.
Alright, so we have a. I don't know. Is Donna still here?
Oh, it's after, so I'm going to.
How can we approve a negative?
I don't know, I mean, the accountant signed them?
If you want, if you want to come back to them, I'm going to text her.
Alright, thanks, let's come back to us.
Oh, wait, she's already ahead of it. It was a correction.
Two corrections?
Yes, yes.
One for Fire Department expenses and one for school lunch? Okay, so we have payroll warrant, yeah, payroll warrant 15-50V for the amount of negative 6,700, negative $6,979.38 and warrant 15-50V in the amount of negative $67.90, I would accept a motion to sign both.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're talking to ourselves.
I know.
We have a Treasury warrant in the amount of $315,863.06.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are those. Heather has the payroll warrants.
There's three of them here.
If you're writing down the motion, I already have it.
Oh, excellent.
I would like a motion, I will make a motion, wait a minute here. I move to vote the time sheets for Shannon Cutler, Geraldine Swanson, and Ron Lauren to be voted on separately from the remaining town employees.
So moved.
I made, I just need a second, I made the motion.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I'm asking that we vote on the payroll for Shannon Cutler, Geraldine Swanson, and Ron Lauren for this reason. Their PCFs reflect different amounts than what they're actually working. For example, Shannon's PCF indicates that she should work for 25 hours per week. She generally works 31 hours per week, so it's not in compliance with what the PCF states. Also, my opinion is that if we are open from 8:30 to 4, we should be paying our employees from 8:30 to 4. Shannon's time sheet specifies that she works from 8:15 to 4. And so I know it's 15 minutes per day, but if you're going to allow the Board of Assessors Office to make their own hours, then you need to allow every other office to make their own hours. I would also like to bring up that the Board of Health, the PCF for them, Mr. Lauren specifies that he should, he can work 10-plus hours, but was approved by the Finance Committee, PQB, and the Board of Selectmen not to exceed 10 hours. Also, for Ms. Swanson, it was approved up to 21-plus hours per week, but was approved by the PQB Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen not to exceed 21 hours. She and Ron, Mr. Lauren, currently work many more than those specified hours. So I would like to pull those out and accept a motion not to sign the payroll for those three employees. However, that being said, I am not looking to take the money away from anybody that they have already earned. They worked the hours, they need to be paid for those hours. My point is that department heads, elected or appointed, need to follow proper procedures and rules. If a PCF is written, stated, and approved one way, then that's what they need to follow. So, I would make a motion not to sign the payroll for those three employees.
A question?
Can you make a second and we can talk about it?
I'll second.
For discussion.
So going forward, they can't work more than the hours under the.
I would say that the Board of Selectmen needs to send a letter to those department heads stating that the PCFs for those positions are at this number of hours and that we will not be paying employees for more than that number of hours.
Going forward?
At, we're in the middle of a cycle, so I would say at the beginning of the fiscal year, because we're right at the very end, you're going to put one more payroll in and they've already worked part of that. And so effective with the beginning of the fiscal year, then we are only going to pay people for what their PCF specifies. That also being said, the PCFs in the Board of Health are temporary positions only until June 30th. There has been no other paperwork filed, so currently if there is no other paperwork filed, there shouldn't be anyone reporting to work in the Board of Health Office effective July 1st.
And you want to go on record that we're not going to pay that position unless the proper paperwork is submitted?
I would go on record to say that. So there's a motion and a second not to sign the three. Is there any other discussion?
And also, we're going to put it official.
I was going to ask for two separate.
Okay.
So the first would be not to sign, motion and a second, any other discussion? A vote? All those in favor of not signing, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I am going to abstain upon response from each individual.
So that's two yeses not to sign and one abstention. I would also accept a motion to draft a letter, to have Heather draft a letter to the department heads of the Board of Health, the Board of Health employees, the Board of Assessors, the Board of Assessor employees stating that hours worked need to match that of the PCF. Also, maybe a gentle reminder to the Board of Health, the, yeah, the Board of Health, that they need to resubmit paperwork because the temporary PCFs expire on June 30th.
Now, for me?
Sure.
We have.
Well, that's my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion about drafting a letter? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I guess my question is, we have one person here that's involved here.
Which is why she stepped off.
And I agree, so, but I think she should have the opportunity if you want to say anything about this, I don't know if you're just. Pardon?
That might be appropriate.
Shannon Cutler. So my PCF said 25 hours per week. My payroll for those two weeks together were 31, I think 31-plus hours.
For each week?
For each week, correct. So I was instructed that I was on a flex 25 hours, so if I didn't work the 25 hours one week, I could make it up in the following week. Well, I was out April vacation for school vacation in the first week of May. So I was down 50 hours, because for my full year, it's 25 hours per week that I'm budgeted for. So all I did was make up a couple of hours on those two weeks and I only have two more before the fiscal year ends and then July 1, I'm back to 25 hours a week.
I understand your point.
Yep, that's it, I just wanted to tell you that's what I was doing, because that's what my Board said that I was able to do.
Hence the letter to the Boards.
So you were basically taking unpaid time off and holding the hours.
I was instructed that I could add the hours on in a different week because I did not have paid time off. The way that the, I guess the way that the Personnel Book Handbook reads is you have to be here a year on July 1, so I technically almost have to work two years before I get a week off. So by taking that time off, I could make it up because I have a flex time.
So that's not specified on the PCF.
Right.
Liz, just to clarify, when I had my administrative assistant, I didn't let him go over the hours. What he did was if he's out week one and he wants to get, you know, all of his hours in the next week, he can do that. But I didn't go over the 36 hours biweekly, so it was still in that two-period thing of time and he took a vacation one time. You took vacation, he doesn't get vacation. So unless he's able to make up the additional 18 hours that he normally works in week two, he's not getting paid for and he's not making up for it later on.
Right.
Then Shannon's case, that 25 hours a week, you can't make it up in the following week because you'd be over 40 hours.
Right, they said as long as they didn't go over in the course of a year.
And so part of that would be communication between Boards and Treasurers and Board of Selectmen and whoever else is in charge of this, because if that conversation isn't had, then it doesn't look kosher. But, so that's all set, and then I would accept a motion to sign the payroll with the three exemptions, so this dollar amount Heather isn't going to match. Well, it does match, it's the same number. Right. I would accept a motion to sign payroll 15-51 in the amount of $273,691.32.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, anybody?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have payroll 15-51L in the amount of $192,842.14.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have minutes to approve from May 26th and June 2nd, has everyone had a chance to look at them? I would accept a motion to approve the minutes from May 26th then June 2nd.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we don't have, our next meeting is June 30th, we don't have a review with the Town Accountant and Fire Chief, that has been moved to July 21st. Is there anything else on the, oh, we're talking about POS, POS, not POS, that's tomorrow.
Sorry.
BOs, Board of Selectmen Policies. So our next meeting is June 30th. We're now going to move into executive session, we will not be returning into open session. We'll be going into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Number 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate related to the Greenway Purchase and Sale Agreement, and we'll be moving into executive session to approve various minutes from May 5th to June 2nd for items from executive sessions 1, 2, and 3. By roll call, vote please.
Martin, aye.
Molten, aye.
Cutler, aye.
Searce, aye.